I'm John Franklin, VISTA Deputy Mayor. I'm here as a councilman and I'm here as a citizen tonight to ask you to vote against the PLA. We know, well, we don't know exactly because you haven't negotiated yet. We don't know what the provisions of this PLA are. We know what typical provisions of a PLA are. And we know that they require additional expenses. The cost may be the same because there's only so much money to go around. There's only $247 million to work with. What won't be the same is the quantity of project that our community gets and that the children that you're really here to represent receive. I think this is a really simple issue. I don't think it's a partisan issue. I don't think it's about fair compensation or it's about level work. It's about the kids. Your primary charge here is to make sure that the children, the next generation of VISTA learners, receive the kind of quality education and quality facilities that they deserve. This is a tough room. I've made a lot of tough votes in tough rooms. A lot of fine people here tonight on both sides of this issue. All do great work and very proud of the work that they do. If you had a lookout on a room tonight filled with kindergartners and first graders and second graders and third graders, what would you want to do for them? And what I'm asking you to do is imagine that this room is filled with the little children who live in our city who want great facilities. And if you do in your heart and you believe, and I do, that you were going to receive fewer projects, build fewer projects to benefit those kids, how would you want them to judge you? If they understood this issue, and if that's the truth, then you have to make a decision about whether that's true. I believe it is. I believe the kids will receive less. So I'm asking you to look in your heart and pretend that this audience, lookout and see all the little children that you're really here to represent. Those are your constituents. Thank you.
Sean Ellis.
Can you guys hear me pretty good? Awesome. My name is Sean Ellis. I represent Local 230. I'm a Marine infantry veteran. I've served in 17 countries. I'm a taxpayer, a registered voter, and a resident here in Vista, California. My zip code is 92084. And to me, this PLA means one thing. Are you going to allow the people of Vista to be empowered and be middle-class? That's what we need to talk about because our wages, when that PLA is there, it's a living wage. They can buy a house. They can lift themselves. They can empower themselves. I live right off of Obier. I don't live on the other side of the freeway where the nicer part of Vista is. I live in the working-class Vista where people wear these. They don't wear slacks. They don't wear shirts. They don't wear a blazer. And everybody's moving out because we're unable to afford our rent. Well, with that PLA, that's going to make them, that's going to allow our apprentices to get high-quality training that we've been doing for over 125 years. And it's going to allow them to have those middle-class wages so that one day they can stay in Vista and not get moved out and get displaced. That is what's important here. You can talk all numbers and all the statistics you want, but what legacy are you going to leave behind? Look at how many people are behind me that are standing up for what they believe in. Where is our opposition at? Where are they? We're here, we're here representing the working man, an organization that's been doing this since 1889. Since 1889, we've been doing this. And we're here to represent working people and to represent them because they know when they're on that PLA job, they make our total package. I've worked at Camp Pendleton my whole entire career. And some of the non-union guys make more than us. So it's allowing them to lift up. It's allowing everybody to be middle-class in this great city of ours. We've passed so many propositions that's going to allow so much money to come into our great city. Are we going to hold them accountable? Are we going to hold business owners accountable? Are we going to allow people to have that middle-class, that middle-class wage, those benefits, those opportunities? That's all I want to leave with you guys today. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Carol Kinne.
No, sorry. You're on one. Gary Winchester.
Good evening, everyone. Pardon me if I'll introduce, but hello, my name is Gary Winchester. And I'm a resident of Vista and two of my three children attend Lake Elementary School. I'm asking you tonight to advocate a no vote for the project labor agreements. PLAs can and will increase the cost of work needs to be done. And any delay that has come across here will be promised from my vote that I gave you for Prop LL bond arrangements to pass. Lake is a Vista Unified School in the city of Oceanside. And there is a charter provision for fair and open competition approved by 54% of the voters on June 8th in 2010, Oceanside Charter 303. Officials such as yourself and city council members should solicit and look around for all experience in their construction contractors and all other skilled employees that will help deliver on time and on budget the projects that were promised for fair, free, and open competition without any cost for potential dismissal or discrimination of PLAs. PLAs are so controversial that they have been banned in 24 states and 11 entities in California, parts of San Diego County, El Cajon, and Oceanside. I have been on both sides, working in Balboa Park for 17 years as a senior exhibits preparator at numerous museums. And also in 2008, I worked at Globe Theatre, joining the local IAC painters and alley trade union for my apprenticeship under Paul Bauschley. I moved away, helping my husband with his career. And now I am back with my family. For the last five years, I've been making Vista my home. I am here tonight as a concerned mom and I supported Prop LL with a yes vote. But tonight, I'm asking you to be fair and vote no because fair is fair contract, fair costs, and fairness on the vote that I have given you on Prop LL and voting no on Project Labor Agreements. Thank you for your time. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here tonight. It is important. I don't want to see anyone's work ticking away from you. I want to see fair work for everyone, but I also want to see my children's school not be disheveled.
Carol Kinne. Carol Kinne.
Good evening, board members. It's an honor to be here with you today. I have presented before many of you now, I think, three times separately to discuss the benefits of Project Labor Agreements, the benefits that are attributed to it that increase things like transparency, accountability, and investment in our communities. And I think we've talked a lot about local hire and all of the various components that we bring to bear when we have a Project Labor Agreement. I want to reiterate again that the stories that you've been hearing tonight, and I want to, I want to actually say this to the parents in the room who have concerns regarding this matter, I'm a parent too. All of these men and women, so many of them are also parents of children. We would never want to do something that takes away a safe classroom or a safe learning space or a good learning environment from any child. So nothing that we do here is advocating for that even a little bit. In fact, based on actual data that we've seen in the implementation of Project Labor Agreements across this county and across the state of California, we can actually say with real truth that Project Labor Agreements allow school districts to do more with the money they have because of the skilled and trained workforce, because of the manner in which we work together and coordinate, because of the fact that we hold contractors accountable and that they're not able to bring in all those change orders that actually raise prices. We do the work to make sure that workers are cared for, that the communities are cared for, and that the end product is quality and strong. And beyond all that, we also do the education piece. We are also educators. We do the apprenticeship programs. They are the top in the nation, in the, in the United States. Building trades unions are only second to the U.S. Armed Services in terms of the amount of money that we invest in raising up workforce development. And so I just want you to understand that that money comes out of the paychecks of these men and women who literally do this work. They contribute into it. So we ask you to support this. Thank you so much.
Neil Bradley.
Neil, before you start, are you Calabasas?
Carl's in.
Carl.
Yes.
Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Neil Bradley. Thank you for having me tight. I work for a local company, MRC Construction, located in San Marcos, California. We are a local, family-owned business, and our owner is a lifelong Vista resident. We do employ numerous Vista residents, which are parents of your students. We recently built all your solar structures, all your schools. We also support the local community and get back with the schools. Having a PLA in most cases would possibly exclude us from doing any of your work. We do find that having PLAs, it does increase the cost and also decrease productivity. I can echo comments earlier that were mentioned here. My question is why change? Union companies can still bid on your work without a PLA. So I'd say please, while you're promising, do not have a PLA. Thank you.
Tom Lemon.
I'm local San Diego building trades. I want to just add it to the mixed Marine Corps veteran and Highway 78 resident. I want to address a bunch of what I heard tonight, but specifically, I want to do it with Public Contract Code 2500, where it says what is and what is not a PLA. I think that's important. We can have conjecture and we can say this and we can say that, or we can go to the state law of California that says what a PLA is. A PLA has mandatory requirement for helmets to hard hats, an opportunity for veterans to get into the trade. Hard to beat. A PLA has guaranteed no strikes. That's good. A PLA guarantees, oh my God, so let me go back here real quick because I don't want to miss this. A PLA guarantees that anyone, any contractor, any person of color, race, religion, whatever, will have an opportunity to work on a project. A PLA, for Sunday, may have a hard time with that. Does all these things. But it does more. It does more. It's more than brick and mortar. A PLA gives you an opportunity, an opportunity to take your citizens that pay for the bond and make sure that they actually work on the job. A PLA guarantees that 20% of the workforce will be able to get into apprenticeship. Not just any apprenticeship, but as Ms. Kim said, the best apprenticeship. In California, when we talk about apprenticeships and all the apprenticeships that we're talking about, everything from those culinary workers all the way to construction workers, 92% of the people who graduate from programs come from joint labor management apprenticeship programs, a program that I have been paying into for 38 years. And 95% of women and people of color come from new universities. Thanks so much.
Okay, now it's our turn to have the discussion. So I'm going to ask everybody to be respectful of our time. And if we say comments that you don't care for or that you do care for, keep your response to yourself, please. Thank you, so we can get through our conversations. I'd ask Richard Tiptree to come assist us with the deliberations around the Project Labor Agreement. So this is, Richard Tiptree from the room, yes.
I'm here mostly, I'm not giving a presentation as to answer any questions about the procedure or process you may have. So they're going to go ahead and discuss first?
Yes, please. Our only time to do this is right now.
Absolutely. And I hear you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. I know that this topic is a topic with multiple perspectives, but I appreciate community coming out because this is what democracy looks like. It's us having a conversation, looking at the data, looking at what is happening on this topic, and making sure that we up here on the front make an informed decision. And so I'd like to start off by stating two facts. When I look at the city of Vista, when I look at their demographics, I see my neighbors. I see my community. The city of Vista has one of the lowest or one of the highest poverty rates in North County, San Diego, in addition to Escondido. When we look at the number of students from the ages of 16, 20, 16 and 24 that are not working, that are not in school, those are our students. And so when I think of a Project Labor Agreement, I see an investment back in the community. I see what can we do? What can we do to make sure that the bond that we pass is benefit, or people from our community benefit from that? And I think that's what the local hiring agreement does. Now, I'd like to pull out this independent survey from San Diego Unified. A lot of the arguments that we have heard tonight is that it's going to cost more. Well, on this independent survey done by the San Diego or done to report on the San Diego Unified Measure S bond, first thing on there, there has been no increase in the cost of winning bids. No increase. And so following that, we look at what they did. They targeted hiring workers from the lowest impoverished areas. Those are the parents of our students. When we talk about PLA, when we talk about doing quality projects, it's not just about our students, it's about their parents as well. When we can uplift the entire community, when we can make sure that they have a guaranteed job, when we can make sure that they're not leaving the city of Vista because they can't afford to live here. And we do have an issue with attendance. We do have an issue with losing students. But if they can get this job and we hire people from the city of Vista, let's retain them. Let's maintain our attendance. Let's maintain our enrollment. And so with that, I'm going to urge my colleagues to vote for a PLA for Mesraal. But I'm also going to talk about another opportunity, helmets to hard hat. We have Camp Pendleton right across the street. These are military families. We can bring these military families that can help with our enrollment. Now, the first part of this step is, do we want to enter into negotiations for a PLA? We don't have what that looks like, but at this point, wishes to move forward, we have the opportunity to create a future, not just on the facility side for our schools, but to boost the local economy in Vista. When I look at our city budget for 2018, 2019, the only reason they're meeting their budget this year is due to the medical marijuana tax. Well, guess what? When local workers get hired, they have a living wage, they can invest that money back into the community. Not only does it benefit our students, it also benefits the city of Vista. And so with that, I'm urging my colleagues to vote yes.
Anything else? Have any thoughts they'd like to share?
Yes, I do. When the bond was placed on the, or the decision was made to do an exploration for the bond, there was a large bond committee group that had two board members on it, myself included, had a number of our, our school district union representatives, community members, and so on. And basically, that, that group's charge was to decide what would be the best avenue for us as a school district to raise money because some people may or may not know this, but there are other vehicles within the state structure in California in which school districts can raise money to provide for a bond set. However, the, the best and most likely vehicle that would do was the bond that we passed, which, and I don't think I'm going to remember the proposition number, but you may remember that in California, it used to take a two-thirds majority to approve a bond, and then the state passed a bond process in which you could use 55%. However, that 55% meant that there were a significant number of regulations that applied to the school district so that the bond oversight and all of that, those areas were done. I believe the first time Vista did that was in about 2002. Is that right, Matt?
Early 2000.
Yeah, 2002. And we passed a bond in the city of Vista for that. You know, at that time, there was no, I worked in the district at that time. I wasn't on this board, but there was no discussion of a PLA. And, and, you know, I was a teachers' union member for 18 years when I was a teacher myself. And I have, I think I mentioned the last time we met, I have relatives who worked in the construction trades and many of them were union folks. I don't have a problem with the union or supporting the union. The problem I have at this juncture for us is that when this was put forward, this conversation should have occurred in September of 2018. You don't need to applaud. Because honestly, we had the community who did not realize that this might be a consideration, who, and based on the replies I've had, a significant number of them would have likely not voted for this. So had this happened at that juncture, there are possibly our bond might have been in jeopardy. And so I think I'm going to disagree with Councilman Franklin that I think we have a number of constituencies as a board, school board member, and certainly, students are our number-one group that we have to keep an eye on. But we also have to be fiscally responsible to the citizens of Vista and be sure that we do that. And unfortunately, there's an awful lot of conversation back and forth about more costs, less costs. There's been some admissions that there are, there's monies that go toward the operation of the union and that part of it. So I, I just don't, I don't have a problem again with the union, but I just don't believe that I can vote for this at this juncture simply because we did not inform the voters that they were going to be faced with this back when this went on the bond and they could make an honest decision because I think there are a significant number of folks who might have voted against it. So I think we should consider that as board members as we go through this.
When I think of our community here in Vista, all the boundaries that include Vista Unified School District, we do have some of the biggest pockets of poverty in the entire county. And it's almost as if we have two Vistas. And in that context, the idea of giving families the tools that they need to stay, to pay rent so they don't have to live in multi-generational homes, the idea of empowering parents to be able to pay for their rent and food and not choose between a bill and that by having, by investing into local labor, that speaks to me. Additionally, I concur with the disenfranchised youth that we have here in Vista. I mean, we top the county. We're at the very top in that statistic. And the fact that many young men and women could become part of this workforce is, is very powerful. We can't continue to have two Vistas. We need to invest in the people who live here, and we need to have that money stay in Vista.
I'm torn. Okay, so I did all my homework, lots and lots and lots of homework. I looked at both sides. I checked out everything. I listened to the constituents. I got many emails. Some of them were not very nice, anti-PLA. I suggest in the future, you target what you guys do successfully to make yourself look good instead of bashing somebody else. PLAs, there wasn't a lot of support at first in my, from my constituents, so I was leaning towards not using PLAs. But then, in the last couple of days, there have been more or supportive PLA in my constituents. It's not about what I want. It's not about what I think is necessary. It's about what the constituents want. It's not about me. It's about the constituents who put me in this seat. Just remember that I am here for the constituents in my area and I listen to what they're saying.
I researched and talked to people on both sides. And the thing that I have difficulty with is I keep hearing it's going to cost more money, it's going to do this, but when I ask for the facts, I'm never given the facts. When I go to talk to different school districts, hospitals, cities that have used PLA, and I say, can you show me the facts of how much it costs? They could pull out their paperwork and they could say, this thing cost us more than what we had. They showed me that the big thing was to change orders, and I have to tell you, I had no idea about any of this before we started into this conversation. I do want to address the, we have a new board now. So what, I think that almost needs to be taken into consideration when people are saying, we didn't hear about this. It's a new board. It's a new time. So I think if we get a motion, we can decide unless anybody else has anything else to add.
I do have something to add. So I was talking to my colleague from Trula Vista who did PLA. And the one recommendation he did have was, you need to make sure that when you're negotiating, that it's somebody that knows how to do this job. And so with that, you know, we're going to have somebody on, on the district side negotiating. And so I asked San Diego Unified, asked Trula Vista what law form you were, you were all using. And they are using Acton, Altis, and RMO. So if we do move forward with this, Dr. Kim, I would definitely recommend, because if Trula Vista, if San Diego Unified can do a PLA that doesn't cost additional money, then we should be able to do that too. At this point in time, did you want legal to go over next steps?
So you want us to follow the script or is there something else? You can answer questions if there were any questions.
You guys go ahead and follow the script. Unless there's questions on that page.
Okay, open vote on whether to delegate authority to negotiate. The board will now vote on whether it will delegate authority to the superintendent or other designate and legal counsel to take such, such actions as are required to begin negotiating the terms of a Project Labor Agreement, including but not limited to the scope of any such agreement. Is there a motion?
One, based on my previous comment, I would prefer for our own law form not to be the negotiations. And if we can get the law from that I mentioned, it would be my only recommendation on this.
I understand.
So with that, I move to approve the PLA for Vista Unified to go into negotiations with the San Diego, San Diego Trade, Trade Council for LL projects. We draw that motion. I move to delegate the authority to the superintendent or superintendent's designate and legal counsel to take such actions as required to begin negotiating the terms of a Project Labor Agreement, including but not limited to the scope of any such agreement.
Second. Any discussion? I, I, since we're talking about changing things, I would like maybe one of us present when, what does it say? The superintendent has the, from the legal camp, so they would know what our thoughts are. All in favor?
Vote no. All right. Hi.
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 All, I, all opposed?
No.
We will be, the PLA? Okay, we're going to take a break.
Stuart.
Stuart.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll see him, I'll see him sooner than later.
a project labor agreement, including but not limited to the scope of any such agreement.
Second. Any discussion? I, I, since we're talking about changing things, I would like maybe one of us present when, what does it say, the superintendent has the, from the legal camp, so they would know what our thoughts are. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All, aye, all opposed? We will be the PLA? Okay, we're going to take a break.